Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Gray.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Mr. President.
For your, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Ben Gray from District Two.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of comments. I know we have all been out surveying our areas, looking at things that we can do, giving, you know, looking at support we can give for a number of different areas. The one thing that I can say for sure is that food is going to be a critical issue for a long period of time, even after this is over. Whenever this, whenever over is, food is going to be a real issue for us going forward for a long period of time, especially people in the towers, young people going to school, a number of others. Food is going to be an issue for a long time. So I know there are a number of efforts out there, and I'm just encouraging people in the community, you know, and people here on this council. When you think about it and you hear some of this, take some time off. Usually it's just, you can go online, spend a couple of dollars to make sure that people are being fed. That's a serious issue in this community, and it will be for a long period of time. So anytime you hear someone, reach out and say donate to this or donate to that so that we can get food to some of our more needy citizens in the community, I would encourage you to do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for this meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is located on the podium.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us at this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. For those of you in our audience, which there's only a few of you, please turn off or silence all electronic devices. In terms of how the public hearings will be conducted, we will first call on the participants who've registered and requested to participate through the Zoom platform. The clerk will call on you, so please be ready. Make sure that your microphone is unmuted, and she will unmute you once you're admitted to and allowed to speak. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for El Chavo Restaurant located at 2411 Ice Street. Please communication in opposition.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the applicant up there? Do we know?
The applicant did not register for the meeting.
Okay, well, I've heard from a couple local residents, there are some concerns, not so much for the restaurant, the bar part of it, but there's a known hall above, and it's in a heavy residential area, and there's just no parking. So their concerns are, obviously, to not have another situation where you have a hall in a residential area. So I really would like to get the applicant on the record to hear his side of this. I have heard from another person that he doesn't intend to use the hall, but I guess I could make the motion subject to limited capacity of less than 10 people upstairs in the hall for hall rental usage.
So we have a motion to recommend approval for the license, subject to the condition that the upstairs hall be limited to an occupancy of no more than 10 people for gatherings in that location that are where liquor is being served. Is there a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion, Mr. President. Can I just ask one question, though?
Sure.
Can we just, can we, since we don't have him on the line and we don't have the person who are in opposition, would it be better if, as you've heard, that he's not going to use the upstairs? Can we just limit it to downstairs only until we hear from him again, and then he can make application to come back?
Councilmember Gray has made a second to your motion, but it sounded like a consideration of a friendly amendment to just approve the main floor for the liquor license.
Do we have time to?
According to the clerk, the council's time on which to consider the recommendation expires within, before the next meeting.
And if I could?
I mean, I just, I'm just asking a question, because I'm seconding your motion.
Yeah, and I would actually prefer that. I would just give them the benefit of the doubt. I think with the lack of parking in the community in that area, trying to make that area better, they would prefer for zero occupancy upstairs, so I don't have an issue with that.
If you don't mind a friendly amendment, I would just say let's stay.
Not at all.
Okay. I would make a friendly amendment not to, for them not to use the upstairs at all and just approve the downstairs one.
Madam Clerk, would it just be easier to withdraw the motion and make a new motion?
Correct, yeah. I would just make a motion to amend the application to remove the upstairs hall.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is that your second? We have a council motion as second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. President, I have just a question.
Councilmember Harding.
Did we have to vote on waiving the, our normal liquor rules? I know we, I thought we did last time and voted to reinstate, so I think we.
The last time I made that motion, the clerk advised me that we had previously made that motion and passed.
I thought we reinstated them now.
Are they reinstated?
They were reinstated. This was the only one, though. It's a.
No, I think the point is well taken procedurally, and so I'd suggest that I accept that as a motion to suspend the rules. I'll second the motion for purposes of item six, and item six only. And upon voting on that and reconsideration of the motion just made by Vice President Palermo and seconded by Gray, we'll reinstate the rules. Madam Clerk, call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules, subject to considering item six. We'll vote on item six and then reinstate the rules.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Now roll call on council, Vice President Palermo's motion to approve, subject to the main floor only.
Item six is amended. Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Move to the reinstate. Second.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items seven through 21 begin at this time. We have some people waiting who have registered on Zoom who we will call on first, and then we will proceed to members who are attending, the public who are attending the meeting in person. Items seven through 12, madam clerk, we have someone registered?
Before you begin, Mr. President, I'd ask for 16 to be pulled from the consent agenda.
So moved. Yeah, it will be done.
Yes, and we have for items seven to 12, a representative from EHPV, and then we also have the applicant for item eight, which is also a Keno item.
So we're ready for the Big Red Keno representative?
Just give us just one second. Melody. Okay, Melody is unmuted.
Go ahead, Melody.
Mr. President, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding Big Red Keno.
Thank you. And we'll next proceed to Mr. Flores. And just for anyone who's waiting to speak, I forgot to remind people on Zoom, please turn down your speakers so we don't get reverberation, but remember to unmute your own mic on Zoom. Madam Clerk, Mr. Flores.
Mr. Flores is unmuted.
Flores, sorry.
You're unmuted.
Yes, sorry.
It's your turn to speak.
Sorry, can I, Flores, is there a question? Sorry.
Go ahead and begin.
No questions. It's your turn to speak.
I'm sorry, I'm hard, I'm here. I apologize.
I just, just start talking. Yeah, you're right. We have them.
Oh, I'm, 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 okay, I can see now. Um, just here, um, I just asked for a demo license, um, just represent the integrating smart city of the, that look against the, to increase traffic. From what we have seen for past three, still like it might decrease traffic if people stay a little bit longer late demo. Um, I'm not sure what, what they assume it means, and that, or.
Thank you. And just for the record, you're at 12221 Mary Plaza, Suite 102, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, next person, we have Mr. Fitzher from Public Works for item 16.
And we pulled that from the consent.
Okay.
So that's it for consent.
All right. Is there a council member, any discussion on items one through 15 or 17 through 21?
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call on all the consent items but item 16.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. Okay. Do you want to get Mr. Fitzher in?
Sure. Item 16, a resolution to approve the 2020 standard specifications, the 2020 City of Omaha Public Works Department standard plates, and the updated 2020 materials and testing manual for Public Works construction.
Uh, Fitzher Public Works.
Proceed.
Well, I have a summary here of how this came to be. Can you go through them, or are there specific questions that I can address?
Yeah, let's do the summary.
Please do the summary.
Okay. Uh, these specifications are not dated, they're 2014 standard specification. The draft was available from October 5, 2018, the base six month public comment period. Specific outreach was made to the local consulting, engineering, and contractor community group via the American Council of Engineering Company, or TCDC, as well as the National Utility Contractors Association, or NUCO, the Associated General Contractors, EGC, and the Great Outreach. All comments received, the log and responses to the comments have been posted on public website. All available comments were addressed in the final version of the specification, which are what is now the council agenda reporting. The standard testing manual and standard plates are companions to the standard specification and were also made in the role for similar public review period. Note, the draft instruction specifications have been available and in use since October 5, 2018. Changes from the 2014 standard specification include what are not limited to blended concrete mixes are required for even application. Requirements of concrete material is also applied. Secondly, aggregate based enforcement group with traverse under drains required throughout urban arterial streets. Material requirements for the underdrain piping, empty material, and geotextile factor are provided. Engineers may include longitudinal underdrains in some cases. Item three, negative bigger pit material required for both trench backfill, which is a class one support material and for basic work material. Required concrete is not allowed for these applications. Here, post circuit television inspection and acceptance for sewer infrastructure required to paving at least 30 days after the backfill and lasting the updated traffic control material requirements are required. So that is the summary of what is changed in the specifications that are in front of you for approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to testify on this item 16? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just had some questions kind of about some of the particular items in this document, the upgrades or the updates to the plan. My first question really was to members of the Public Works Committee, whether or not they had been briefed on it or had any information on this. And the ones that I was able to talk to told me that they had not. So I just, before we adopt these, these very impactful edits and changes to the document, I thought it would be responsible for us to have a briefing about the Public Works Committee and/or the city council members who wish to have that done in order to better understand the document that we're considering. So that is why I initially asked for it to be pulled from the consent agenda. I talked with Mr. Fitzher last week, who sent me some information on it. It's, then I also spoke with some of the development community about this as well, and they confirmed what Mr. Fitzher just said about meetings that took place in the public comment period. But again, I thought that, like we did with the building code upgrades a couple of months ago, I thought it was probably something that we should, as a council, have a better understanding about some of the changes and impacts that those changes might have. So what I was going to request then was at least a two-week layover so that those, those briefings could take place.
And I would second that, that layover for the same reason that, just for the public who hasn't noted, when I pulled it up, it's hundreds of pages long. And a lot of it is not common knowledge, so for those of us such as myself that don't pour concrete and build roads, I need the assistance of maybe some engineers to even help me understand what some of the changes are. I did ask for a redline version of the 2014 document, because I think it would be really important to know what was in the 2014 and what's being changed, deleted, or amended now. So I did send that, Mr. Flutner, I see you're on here but muted, so I did email that to Mr. Flutner and Bob Stewie requesting a redline version, which I don't know, I'll share it with any of you if I can get that.
Thank you.
I don't want to go page by page from 2014 to 2020 to try and figure out what every single change is.
I see a lot of heads nodding, but the choices, as I read the calendar for your layover, would be one or three weeks. Is that correct, madam clerk?
That's correct.
I would ask for three.
Yeah, no, I'll ask for three.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this item or the motion? Councilmember Pauls?
I would just like to ask the chair, was this brought in front of our committee?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, that's me. I sort of got unaware. And the interesting thing about it is, I know nothing about concrete, but I have people say, why are these roads crumbling? They're not that old. So I think if we, if it's further knowledge, those of us sitting on the council and the public could probably understand. So I am for the layover. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls, is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Vice President Palermo, chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. In all fairness, because we have not met the last couple of meetings because of what's currently going on, I think it's only right, and Councilmember Melton was correct, there's 561 pages. The only way we're going to know what's changed, because a lot of it is repetitious, unless you're really in this business, we just wouldn't know. So I think that's the best, if we could possibly get the changes, maybe get into the Public Works Committee, give us some time to dissect everything to see. Because I think we've all heard from the community on changes that were going to be made that may save taxpayer money or may not save taxpayer money. And I think the times that we're in now, it's our job to absolutely do that, so we're going to need that. I would agree with the layover. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Palermo. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this item or the motion? We have a motion, a second to lay over to our May 8, May 19 meeting. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And real quick, can we get the microphones turned up a little bit? Thank you. Item 22, a resolution to approve the City of Omaha 2018 tax increment financing annual report.
The public hearing on item 22 begins at this time. Madam Clerk, we have Dr. Feischinger, who's waiting to be heard, and Jennifer Taylor, Law Department.
And Erin sent me an email that she had poor internet connection, and so she left the meeting.
Jennifer Taylor?
And, yeah, I think Bridget Hadley is available, too, and they're both unmuted.
All right, and they're saying they're just happy to answer any questions?
I believe so, yes.
I think Bridget has a brief overview she wanted to give.
All right, Bridget Hadley, would you unmute her?
Good afternoon, members of the council and president here. I will give you just a few technical data from the report. Twenty tip projects were approved and 10 tip projects paid off to reach their 15-year maturity in 2019. And this again is for the City of Omaha 2019 annual tip report. The 20 tip projects represented approximately 39 million in tip loan proceeds approved. That's exclusive of approved interest. And those project funded tip project investments of nearly $319 million. Forty-five percent of the tip projects or earned projects were solely housing projects of different housing types. Of those housing projects, 13.5% of the total 880 housing units, so that's 120 units, were dedicated to low-income households to help address affordable housing in Omaha. I just wanted to make that point because I know we've had a lot of some criticism about addressing poor affordable housing using tip, and I just want to make the point that tip is helping to address affordable housing issues. On table eight, just to bring your attention to page eight, the table one, page eight, it will illustrate that the actual valuation of the 235 active tip projects that the law has have reached 77% of the developers' and owners' initial estimate of final project valuation. I bring that point up because in the county development law, that is one of the data points, main data points that the law asks us to talk about. So essentially, it's just giving you an idea cumulatively, 77% of all of these active tip projects are at least reaching 77% of the developers' initial objective valuation. So they're getting closer to what that actual valuation is. That's different from the prior year. Last year was at 71%. And then lastly, I would just say that the payoff section of the report, just to work again, continues to demonstrate the significance of tip projects as it relates to the enhancement of real property valuation to tax revenues. Of the actual 10 projects of payoff, property valuation increased 205, almost 206 million over the base valuation, which is about 4,786% increase of the base valuation. And then property tax revenue increased by about 4.6 million, and that's 5,102% over the base tax. So that is all I have to highlight. If you have any questions, I'd like to end.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents in attendance who wish to be heard? Are there any opponents to item 22 in attendance at the meeting present who wish to be heard?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I just have some questions that I would hope that our media, some of them present in the Omaha World-Herald would report on for us, because it's, not a lot of the information is in here. There's a report on TIF, yes. But previous items on today indicate that some of the TIF is being taken back. To me, that raises a question. Is there a problem with TIF? It doesn't say that the report covers any of that. But if it was granted before at three or four locations in Omaha, now it's being rescinded, it implies to me that there's some sort of a problem there. And I don't know if I heard correctly just a minute ago there about the developers themselves were suggesting the valuations. I don't know that they have the legal authority to do that, do they? Is it that supposed to be done by the state and the county? So I just wonder if the press would ask some of those questions of our representatives for us, because we don't have time at these meetings and it's not on the paper, to ask those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so the record would reflect, that the Douglas County Assessor determines the valuations at all times, whether at the initial base period or at the completion of the payoff, that is done by the Douglas County Assessor. Does anyone on the council wish to be heard on this item? Is there anyone?
I would just like to note, just for the public, this is a report of the facts. We're accepting the report of the tip projects that have been paid off, what has passed, what's been invested, the increase in property tax that we've seen from the investment. And so this is simply what we're voting on, is accepting the report. And I just want to say I appreciate the amount of detail, Bridget, that you and your team has put into these reports, and I think they're so important to really review and look at as we look back over the last year. So Bridget, thank you for all the detail and all the work in this.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Gray, a second, tied second by Councilmembers Harding and Alston. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, seven to zero. Item 23, a resolution to request that the state of Nebraska and Douglas County work with the mayor and other representatives of city government to ensure that the City of Omaha is reimbursed for its incremental costs associated with the COVID-19 pandemic.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. I don't see that we have anyone registered online to participate, but are there any, any members of the public in attendance who wish to speak as proponents? Commissioner Duda, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, distinguished members of the council. We're all in this together. I'm not big into hashtags, but I'm into recognizing the common enemy that we all have and the unique opportunity Douglas County has been given for all of us to help address the problems that we are facing. I am absolutely committed to making sure that Omaha's expenses are met. I'm sorry that we cannot use this for revenue loss. We're still wrestling with the guidelines of what all is appropriate and how to cover it, but I just want to assure you that I am absolutely committed to not only Omaha, Ralston, Bennington Valley, Waterloo, Boys Town, the fire departments that are within the county, every entity that is within Douglas County that has incurred expense, if they do not have another funding stream. I believe that, like the university. do not have another funding stream. I believe that, like the university, UNO and the Med Center have another funding stream. I think K through 12 schools have another funding stream. I believe the airport has another funding stream. Outside of that, we hold responsibility for helping everybody within our borders to meet their needs. The pie is big enough to do that. I intend, it is my intent to recommend to the county board, we aren't even going to begin public discussion on this until May 19th. We're still trying to understand it. We're still grappling with all the intricacies of this. It is my hope that Douglas County will do its funding in two packages. The first one I call the no-brainer package, and that is every entity within the county that has incurred actual out-of-pocket expense for whatever related to the COVID, those are the no brainers. I say, I hope that we put those to bed first, then we move on to the dream list of the rest of the money to see what's the best way to utilize those funds. So we will have public discussion on May 19th. It is my hope that possibly as soon as two weeks after that, we may be ready for the no-brainer action. And that is where I hope you will see that you are made whole, not for your revenue loss, but for your out-of-pocket expenses. Thank you. Just wanted to share that with you. I truly am sorry that even felt the need to put this on the agenda. We, it should be a given. We're partners. We're all in this together. You shouldn't even have to formally publicly ask us. It should just be understood. It's not. I get it. So we will move forward together.
Thank you. And just for the record, Commissioner Duda, can we have your full name and address?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm not used to being on this side. Claire Duda, Chairman of the Douglas County Board. The only commissioner, incidentally, that does not live in Omaha, just for the record. Doesn't matter. I'm committed to helping you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duda, and our regards to the rest of your commissioners.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance who wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just thank Chairman Duda for coming to our meeting today and to express that level of support to us. We think that's very important and to kind of align the next steps as you go through your process, too, which I know still has some unknowns, and you're trying to work through it, too, like we all are. So we appreciate that message of unity and being all of us together, because we are, and look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I'll echo most of what Mr. Festerson said, too. I appreciate Claire coming down here and committing as much as he can to, for the county board to say that they will help cover our COVID, the city's COVID-related costs. I think, and I'll address the reason why it's on the agenda. I think there was some conversation last week that that wasn't necessarily the route that was going to be taken. And as soon as that happened, I think there was a mad rush of council members to go to the Law Department requesting this resolution to be placed on the agenda. So if nothing else, I think it's very comforting to hear your comments. We appreciate you coming down here and expressing those. But I will say, it's also nice to have that on the record. So I guess our mission was accomplished by having this resolution placed on our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Harding. And please understand, I am, of course, only speaking as one commissioner, and these are decisions that will be made by the entire board. I cannot speak for them.
That's...
Simply tell you what my intentions are going forward. And I believe the board will be on board.
Again, that's why I said, I know you're the only one person here, but that's why we wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Motion approved.
Second.
Does anyone else wish to be heard?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Melton.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Commissioner Duda. I really do appreciate you taking the time to come down and address us. And I understand it is one vote, but I also think as the chair, your vote's important. And I also think that the other members listen and respect you on that board. So I appreciate you coming down. And just on another note, because we serve together on the Omaha Douglas County Building Commission, hopefully they won't be left out on the additional expenses that they're incurring with all of the cleaning and everything else. So there's one example where we're always constantly, the county and the city, we're working together all the time. A lot of people don't, you know, necessarily understand. So we've got a lot of challenges facing us just with this building and the courthouse. And as soon as we get it back open to the public in the next few weeks, again, there are lots of expenses, both the county and the city are incurring over that. So I look forward to working with you in regards to those issues, too.
Thank you for the reminder. And I should have listed the building commission. Well, but truly, they're in the no-brainer category. I mean, every time we do a deep cleaning on the courthouse, this wasn't budgeted, nobody planned for it, it's expensive, but it has to be done. So the building commission, thank you for making that point, will be included, I hope, in the no-brainer list.
No, I appreciate that. In fact, I just saw that our budget was going to be presented in May. They continued that to June. And I think due to, we don't know what the COVID-related expenses are going to be or how we're going to pay for it, so we've kind of delayed that. So that's why it was kind of at the top of my mind. I just read that email before coming down. Thank you very much. And I do look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Also, nice boots.
Well, I'm on my motorcycle today. You're only supposed to see me from the waist up.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. I would just share a little bit of my own perspective. And I said this a little bit last week, is that in coming from a large family, I was taught by my now-deceased mother, Christopher, you don't ask, you can't expect to receive. And while there were initial concerns about what we were hearing as a council from the state and county level, I think it is important, in a collegial way, to make the friendly ask, to highlight and underscore the important part that the city plays in the county and in the state's health, and the role on the front lines that our first responders and others in the city are facing in incurring dramatic expenses that are related to this virus. So I look at it as a polite way to ask and as an opportunity to build new beginnings on how the city and the county approach the multitude of funding issues that they face together. And hopefully, this is a new day and a new dawn for those sorts of things as well.
Very well put. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, seven to zero. Item 24, an ordinance approving the fiscal year bill 19, transportation grant funds in the amount of $16,960,000 to finance improvements to 120th Street between Stonegate Drive and Roanoke Boulevard.
The public hearing on item 24 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 25 to 28, ordinances to transfer permanent easements and land to OPPD, to relocate facilities for properties located near 10th Street and I-80, near 156th Street and Blando Street, near 60th Street and Lebanon Street, near 79th Street and Dodge Street.
The public hearing on items 25 through and including 28 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 29, an ordinance approving the recycling partnership grant agreement to provide for cash grant in the amount of $825,000.
The public hearing on item 29 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 30, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled Police Grant Coordinator. Personnel Board recommends approval.
I see we have Captain Reyes. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Would you allow Captain Reyes to?
He's unmuted.
Okay. And I understand, Captain, you're available to answer any questions. Is that Okay, we have Jim, we have Jim Bagley.
Jim Bagley's unmuted as well.
Mr. Bagley.
Mr. Bagley, please.
Thank you. He's available to answer any questions as well. Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to be heard as a proponent or opponent on item 30? The public hearing is closed.
Item 31, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within roadway maintenance district 2019-04 to cover the cost of constructing and improving north 89th Circle from Burt Street north to the end of the cul-de-sac by asphalt overlay is amendment of the whole request by Councilmember Festerson.
The public hearing on item 31, including the amendment of the whole, begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents wishing to be heard? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just explanation on the amendment of the whole. I think you all recall the long history on this project, and we've talked about it several times in this forum and with neighbors. So the amendment of the whole would make the project share not only 50% in terms of its construction cost, but 50% in terms of its design cost, too, given the fact this kind of happens right before our street maintenance policy was in effect, and that there were several kind of stops and starts with the department on it, that I think will be a nice gesture to the neighborhood who got this project done, which is completed now, but now comes the assessments to be accomplished. So I see it as a one-time thing that was unique to this project, and I look forward to supporting the amendment of the whole next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 32, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts of lots and pieces of real estate to cover the cost of constructing sidewalks in SWR District 2019-01.
The public hearing on item 32 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents who wish to be heard? We have Mr. Kleffner available.
He left the meeting.
Okay. The public hearing is closed.
Item 33, an ordinance approving a bid in multiple purchase orders from Stat Brothers, Inc., with an annual estimated cost of $167,321.29 for the oils, lubricants, and fluids project.
The public hearing on item 33 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents who wish to be heard? The public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 34 to 36, ordinances to acquire private property for the Coal Creek Sewer Separation Construction Project, the Thomas Creek Improvement Phase 1 Construction Project, and the 84th and Dodge Street Intersection Improvements Project.
The public hearing on items 34 through 36 begin at this time. I noticed we have someone registered to speak on item 36. Mr. Conley, would you allow him to speak? Mr. Conley, you're recognized.
Is it? Okay, did you hear me? Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then, Paul Conley, 8405 Indian Hills Drive, come on, I'm asking. I have been president of the Swanson Towers Board of Administratives, and in that capacity, I represent 75 residents of Swanson Towers. But then, then I'll have to apologize to you here with the role that I have to take as a governor, and for his night, out of reasons for opposition to this project. I hope you follow that, and consider our concerns. And I want to do respect, respectful of your time, so I'm not going to reveal those concerns. But I have one additional concern I mentioned in the letter. We might like to keep the project, the credit, but now there's a large portion of the over $1 million dollars that this president's going to cost, that's going to be paid for by taxpayer dollars from the Transportation Fund, not referencing the those that we... So I have, as taxpayers, we have more of those projects than reasons stated in my letter. Given the state of Omaha's streets, it would seem clear that the funds to be expended on this project better spend on fixing up city streets. What I'm concerned that I have that wasn't raised in the letter has to do with intersection improvements now, as the order. It seems to be ultimately expansive. In fact, if this were rather than, it says more of a intensive discussion of the city, and if this project actually could then build it itself. So hopefully, this is something that's going to guide the ultimate protestations because it's not really talking about the city. And our last annual meeting, our opposition structures, as you have, and not hurting anyone so far. And for that matter, I'm not even sure that children's hospitals are even good, as you asked about. Children's was not even provided a center, and our last meeting, it's a plan, not a threat. So I'm going to keep this brief, and I'm assuming they get opportunity to speak. I hope clearly of the project, the dirt, the air, that the supposed benefits are far from the negative consequences. If there are any questions, I'd like to have you on my...
And just to confirm, Mr. Conley, you're 8405 Indian Hills Drive, number 3A11, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance who wishes to testify on items 34 through 36?
No, we're...
Thank you. How about anyone actually physically with us here at this meeting today? Does anyone wish to testify on these items? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Well, is there anybody from Public Works that could show us or explain the project or exactly what the, what improvements are going to be made to the intersection?
About topics of Public Works, you'd like me to summarize what the area is?
That'd be great.
Right now, there's two offset teams where Indian Hill and Dodge come together, and then just to the north of that is 84th and Indian Hills Drive. This intersection has been problematic since then, intersection offset teams, where they are incredibly difficult to handle. We've got high accidents at this location and very, very high delays. That often times, this intersection, for control of the intersection on 84th Street and West Dodge Road immediately to north of this intersection, because we can't get northbound traffic on 84th Street through these two offset teams efficiently enough in order to move traffic on 84th Street, play of the 84th and West Dodge Road intersection. When it became a parson, the hospital would buy property to the west, and that east-west traffic would once significantly increase between the two hospital campuses. We're talking about two intersections that did an operation at levels of service depth for many hours of the day, not just a half hour, 45 minutes, three to four hours. This was an opportunity to improve and enhance the ability to offset the intersection that you see in front of you. But it will greatly enhance the efficiency and operation of 84th and West Dodge Road, because of the more habitable place. It's going to improve safety, it's going to improve efficiency, and I believe the benefits greatly outweigh any drawbacks. That's enough. I have, I can ask a specific question if you have.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Do you have any other questions before we call on Councilmember Harding?
No, thank you, Mr. Festerson.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Hold on, Mr. Conley. Hold on.
Thank you. Hold on a minute, Paul. Hey, Todd, could you, one of Mr. Conley's questions related to the, I think it's Exhibit A on our documents, it shows out a shaded, it shows a shaded area that includes a large portion of where Swanson Towers building is. And I just wanted to make sure that, just for the record, if you could clarify that the intention is not, obviously, to take anything, or this ordinance is a necessity is really for just the acquisition of that that's needed for right away? There are no plans to, there's no intention of taking any part of the property to render it uninhabitable or even take part of the building? Is that, just please just clarify that for the record.
That is correct. It's a construction easement, and when we come to regular construction, we will have impacts in that area. So we are required by law to acquire that construction. We do not plan to take any of the building, formally, in the building.
Okay. And I knew that that was one of Mr. Conley's questions, one of the conversations I had with him. But, Paul, was there something else that you wanted to add in or comment to?
Oh, we heard, we heard all the justifications for the project. We lived here, we use that intersection every day. I said, I don't agree with it, because the city studies it. Moreover, he doesn't talk about the negative consequences of this thing. It's going to be harder across that street, that street, which we do. It's going to increase speeding on inhale drive. It's going to increase congestion, and inhale, and inhale, possible congestion. on, in L drive, it's going to increase congestion, and then you can deal with all the way that intersection, and they're going to have to run that and moral burdens, closing horse street for a year while they do the running. I still think those benefits, what he's talking about, it's a quirky intersection, we acknowledge that it's quirky intersection, but it, perhaps it works. The guy that's here, like, we go through multiple times a day, and it works for most.
Thank you.
But as you're saying, why do you give this special award for the project?
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
And so, the children's, how can maybe show, maybe show everyone, but not all that stuff?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Any other, anyone else wishing to be heard, or do you have more?
I've got a question for you.
Council Vice President Clairemont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, for Mr. Fitz, or if I could, part of this letter that we received from the Swanson Tower, there's a question in here, and I think you briefly described it, but the question is, who will be disappointed if the project is stopped? So that's kind of the question for you, because I'm thinking of the area, we know the intersection has been this way for as long as I can remember. Obviously, Children's Hospital is expanding, but what has changed in that area that there would be the need for this intersection to take on this overhaul?
I can answer that question. The Children's Hospital has acquired the HDR property, and they're planning significant expansions, so there could be significantly more projected traffic north, or sorry, east-west of the intersection, east-west is the most difficult, would have, because you literally have to stop twice, no matter what direction you're coming from, because of the way the signals are made, that's, that's how orders, with offset teams, how many other ways to do it. So with that significant increase in east-west traffic, you're going to get significantly more delays for the movement. One of the arguments we brought up, Bob, it's going to be more difficult across the street. I don't agree with that. Right now, it's a, it's a multi-phase intersection because you've got the offset teams, so at any given time, cars have to stop a couple of times, it's difficult for pedestrians to know who's going to stop, not. Once this is done, it's going to be a primitive, like, 99% of the other intersections in Omaha, which everybody's used to using, will have normal push buttons and normal basing, and it should be much less confusing for pedestrians.
Oh, can I respond?
Hold on, Mr. Conley. Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, so, Mr. Fitz, or a follow-up, so HDR moved out of this building, and you're saying that there will be more traffic now from Children's Hospital because there was a pedestrian bridge in place put in that I believe most of the people would probably use? So I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just trying to figure out why this has been this, this intersection has been quirky forever, but now, I mean, a large company here in Omaha has moved out, but now we're finding it necessary to take on this project?
That is correct. HDR moved out and the expansion, there's very little of any traffic today, or there would not have been, or any traffic between the hospital and HDR, there's very little interaction, there's no two separate businesses. But the hospital is expanding where HDR is, now you're going to have folks that are going to be, with this one large campus essentially divided by 84th Street, who are going to have more pedestrian, and some of the pedestrian traffic, we can deal with fast circulation, but there's also going to be even bigger traffic between that campus, or our large campus. And so it indicated, the numbers indicated to us was that traffic is going to increase east-west through the intersection, which was a little problematic.
Thank you, Mr. Fitz. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Fitz, one of the questions that was posed was, what is the position or participation of the hospitals? Are they supporting this, or are they asking for this, or is this the Public Works' department's idea?
They're, they're contributing, they're contributing a million and a half hours toward the project. Like, I think that's a very good indication that they feel that this is a warranted improvement. As far as his idea was, I think it was kind of an outcome of the study and the campus plan that they showed us. I think everybody at the table agrees that something can do to improve those movements. You've not been out there to try to go east-west through this intersection. I encourage you to do so. It is, it's not very efficient, to say the least, it is worse, much worse, when there's snow on the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Fitz. Mr. Conley, is there anything new that you haven't shared with us that you'd like to add?
Well, I like the justification, just given for the project, first, I've heard that, heard forever that this was to, based on the traffic study, it took a long time before we saw any kind of traffic study, and if the traffic flow is increased, and if Children's Hospital and the old HDR building has more traffic coming out, and I'd like to know what's going to happen in the year that we get built, so just, that intersection is heavily backed up, and when, when insurance companies get it, and when HDR is through it out, they're doing nothing down there, and the streets, you're going to have congestion down there anyways, and, yeah, the intersection is like, we acknowledge that it's a quirky intersection, it's, it's obvious to anybody who goes through it, it's, I, we, I don't know, we used to, most people we used are used to it, and this is also the worst people we've heard about, all the accidents, and we sit there looking at our general manager's office, and look straight out at the intersection, like, yeah, it's a huge number of accidents out here, I don't know how it relates to other intersections in the city, but I wonder if you're ready to get something out, to tell me about the project, so I'll hear this back, so.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 37, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing agreement to implement the Redfield Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project located at 1901 Howard and 435 South 20th Street in an amount up to $1,662,342.
The public hearing on item 37 begins at this time. I see the planning department's still participating. Do they wish to be heard?
Uh, yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning, this is a pre-standard tip to agreement for project plan and improve back in order, downtown building, Redfield, available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to testify on item 37, either as a proponent or opponent? The public hearing is closed.
Item 38, an ordinance to approve the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy Grant in the amount of $300,000 for the Thomas Creek Improvements Phase One Project.
The public hearing on item 38 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 39, an ordinance to amend an agreement with Douglas County for funding to the Douglas County Attorney's Office in the amended amount of $481,970.
The public hearing on item 39 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Nebraska Preparation Partnership in the amount of $66,000 and authorize the funding from the fiscal year 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Award to provide enhanced security of critical infrastructure assets.
The public hearing on item 40 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 41, an ordinance to approve an amendment to an agreement resolved Data Systems, Inc., with an annual cost of $113,070.60.
The public hearing on item 41 begins at this time. We have two people in the queue, Madam Clerk.
We do. One did not register in time, Mr. Howard, but I believe Chris or...
Mr. Metzler, you're recognized. Yes.
Hello, I'm Sol D. Misters, and, and, good, good afternoon.
Your address, please.
I'm available for any questions, basically, we're upgrading the fire departments, the fire department, and also the EMS division, their medical records, and making it available for aerobics in the cloud-based department, almost like we're doing today with Zoom. So I guess that he's just trying to explain this, that the technology they were using is like us having this meeting over videotape compared to Zoom. It is outdated technology, and we are upgrading them significantly so that they can respond to emergency in a, in a more concise fashion.
And you're at 11802 Ridge Parkway in Broomfield, Colorado, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Is Mr. Howard present?
He is not.
Okay. Is there anyone else present in our room with us today that wishes to be heard on item Public hearing is closed.
Item 42, an ordinance to approve a second agreement pursuant to the interlocal cooperation agreement with the University of Nebraska to complete payment of the city's unfunded reimbursement.
The public hearing on item 42 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 43, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement to implement the Pacific Heights Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project located at 1217 and 1219 Pacific Street in an amount up to $267,122.
The public hearing on item 43 begins at this time. The planning department wish to make any comments.
Okay, straightforward tip, pretty much, and I'm available if you have any questions.
And you're Don Seaton, City of Omaha Planning Department?
Thank you.
Is there anyone present with us here in the room who wishes to speak on item 43, either as a proponent or opponent? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 44 through 98 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Zero motion.
Motion adjourned.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Clairemont.
Yes.
Festerston.
Yes.